All right. Welcome, everybody, to our Common Council meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the deis and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Take a roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
President.
Ms. Hamlet.
Present.
Ms. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Mr. Barton.
Present.
Council President McTiernan.
Present. All right. At this time...
Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Evers, would you please lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for it all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, to read our note regarding closed session.
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to thecityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the closed session and regular meeting notes of October 8th, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're now on to our report part of our meeting. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have a lot to say. I'm sorry. I will breeze through as quickly as I can. The Westfield Regional Health Department is providing appointments for free flu vaccines for those who are homebound and their caretakers regardless of insurance status. You can call the Health Department at (908) 789-4070, extension 4074, or 4472 to make an appointment. A reminder that fall curbside leaf collection is ongoing through Friday, December 6th, or the first major snowfall, Lord help us if it's before that. Leaves should be placed at the curb in paper biodegradable bags for pickup on Household Trash Collection Day. Property owners should not rake or blow leaves into piles in the street. Do not include twigs branches or any other yard debris in leaf bags. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee is seeking volunteers to help with the removal of tree-suckers, which are small branches that grow at the base and on the trunk of trees from the city's tree population. Volunteers will receive training and can work on their own schedule. There will be no climbing on ladders or use of power tools. Sorry for those of you who like power tools. Please contact John Kilby, Chair of the Shade Tree Committee, at johnwkilby, and that's J-O-H-N-W-kilby, at gmail.com, or (908) 273-0440 to volunteer. Early voting for the November 5th general election starts this weekend on Saturday, October 26th, and continues through Sunday, November 3rd. More information on all of those items can be found on the city website. From our Department of Community Programs, the DCP will once again offer a fully supervised camp program during the New Jersey Teachers Convention on Thursday, November 7th, and Friday, November 8th, at the Summit Community Center. They will be doing all of your favorite summer camp games and other fun seasonal activities. Program will be held each day from 8:30 to 5:30, and be sure to register early to save your spot for your child. On Friday at noon this Friday, all Summit seniors are invited to have lunch with me. Please don't make me have lunch by myself at the community center. I'm looking forward to this opportunity to meet with any members of our senior population. Please be sure to RSVP to Gretchen at the Summit Rec, which is G-Master-Fano, G-M-A-S-T-E-R-F-A-N-O, at cityofsummit.org. And last, I would like to address something that came up at our last council meeting. During public comment, an individual raised concerns about how the city handles issues related to homeless individuals. Let me start by affirming that we deeply care about all of our residents, whether they live in a mansion or are housing-challenged. In fact, during a recent incident, our EMS responders were assisting a homeless individual when a third party intervened, delaying their response to the person in need. As we do with all concerns, we thoroughly investigated the matter. The facts, including police body cam footage, reveal a different version of events than what was described at the meeting. The bottom line is that Summit has an outstanding EMS team, and they responded swiftly and appropriately to the individual in need. Additionally, our Police Department prioritizes responses based on the severity of the situation. If they are handling an emergency, non-urgent matters such as reports may need to wait. Summit is a compassionate community. In June, out of concern for our homeless population, we established a task force dedicated to addressing this complex issue. Since then, multiple organizations and individuals have devoted countless hours to find meaningful solutions. Few towns in New Jersey are dedicating as much time and effort to this issue as we are. We regret that this individual felt that the event did not meet our high standards of respect and dignity and professionalism. In all of the years that I've lived here, I have been proud to see our first responders consistently meet those high standards, and we will continue to ensure that everyone in our city is treated with the respect they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, moving along, our city administrator.
Thank you, Council President. A couple, I have more announcements to report. I just want to announce that the search for the new city administrator has been officially today for accepting residents. I'm sure we're going to get a great pool of candidates to represent this city in the future, and we look forward to the process moving forward. Second, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. All of our homes, we all know people in our houses, outside our houses, are affected by this horrible disease, and we urge everybody to please go get your manually appropriate checkups. When you go through this horrible process in your own home, that's the only time you really know about it and feel it. So having it happen in my home, I'm a little bit sensitive to it, but I just want to bring and make everybody aware of that fact. It's very important. Go get your checkups. You know, don't be bashful, just do it. And I know, preach mid choir, Mayor. Next, we have a longstanding issue to resolve on Ashwood Court. And I'm happy to announce that I think we've come to some resolution. The property owner and the city have come to an alternate resolution, and hopefully this resident is going to be happy with the end result. I had her in my office this morning, and hopefully moving forward, the next time somebody speaks to you, they're going to tell you the project is complete and everybody is satisfied as to where we are. Lastly, I'd like to remind everybody, this is the Halloween season. We have to make sure that our children are safe. And this is a little fact that I came across today that was a little disturbing. Did anybody know that children are more than twice as likely to be hit by a car and killed on Halloween than any other holiday? So all I say is please, with nerves of what's going on out there, watch our children, protect our children, and just keep our eyes open. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucci. Well said. So for my comments, I think it's great to see an issue that, if you've been following council meetings, this issue on Ashwood Court's gone on for a long, long time. Sometimes it takes a fresh set of eyes to think about it a little differently, and we'll go into the details, but it was a very eloquent solution to a longstanding problem. So I credit Mr. Tucci and our engineering people to kind of come to this idea that hopefully will resolve this issue, so.
Credit this to them.
Me too. So, Mr. Tucci did steal my thunder a little bit about Halloween.
Right. Sorry.
No, it's great. But again, you know, Halloween is in nine days, and it is a big deal for kids. So we can do our part by making it fun, but we need to make it safe. So please, if you're driving around dusk, drive slowly, turn your lights on. Let's make it a fun event for our children, but a very, very safe event as well. And then the last thing I would say is, this is our last meeting before the election. Okay? So we got a couple, less than two weeks to go. That's two weeks from today. That's right. I hope everyone is passionate about the election process. They should be. Participatory democracy is important. People should vote. They should have their opinions heard. They should be very open about persuading other people of their opinions. That's what participatory democracy is all about. It's a great thing. But let's all remember, we're neighbors too. Okay? So we should be able to disagree about who we may support. Doesn't make us bad people. It means we have a difference of opinion. And I would hope that while we are voting, we all remember we are all hilltoppers. And we will be hilltoppers on November 6th as well. And so I hope people go out there and do their darndest to support the candidates of their choice, but let's be civil, and let's remember we're neighbors. So thank you. Okay. We have one award this evening, I believe, Madam Mayor.
My Vivid Stage friends, come on up, please. Hello, welcome.
Hi.
How are you? Thanks for joining us. The other side of me is perfect.
Okay.
Should dance with the microphone a little bit. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
So this is a City of Summit certificate of recognition awarded to Vivid Stage in recognition of your contribution to the cultural health and enrichment of the Summit community for the past 13 years. The residents of Summit and the local businesses all benefit from the presence of a professional arts organization within the city. This is presented to you on October 22nd, 2024, at the Summit Common Council meetings. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone. I was like, where are they getting away? And then if you guys want to...
I'm going to stay right here.
Here we go.
Thank you.
You know, I never met a microphone I didn't like, but I will be really fast. I just want to say that we so love being in Summit. We've been here for 13 years. We're at the Oak Center. If you've never been, please come see us. We've been in existence 30 years, and 13 of them here at the Oak Center. So we appreciate everyone who is supportive of us in town, and we love, we just love being here. So thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you.
Simply say thank you, and come down and see our shows. They're great.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we now have our historical minute. Councilman Palowski, you have one for this evening?
I do.
Awesome.
Done to a T. That is the condition of our bread. There is no soggyness from insufficient baking nor lack of nourishing qualities through too much baking. The Summit Bakery uses material of fine quality and offers custom bread, rolls, customers' bread, rolls, and biscuits of most delicious flavor and high grade. Another ad of the time for the Summit Bakery reads, "Our bread will be delivered to residents at any time desired. We make all kinds. That's good." These ads were in the Summit Record newspaper, published in 1902, for George W. Baldwin and Sons Bake Shop, which was located at 466 Springfield Ave with the telephone number 123. Who was George Baldwin? At the time of the ad, he was our mayor, the second mayor of Summit. He held that position for two years, which was the term back then. A Democrat, Baldwin also had been a member of the first Common Council in 1899, living on Elm Street and representing Ward 2. The first ordinance introduced and passed at Baldwin's and the first Common Council meeting, held on April 22nd, 1899, provided that the mayor and council, and common council would serve without pay. It's still on the books today, and we do not get paid. In 1915, President Woodrow Wilson appointed George Baldwin as Summit's postmaster. An esteemed knight and founding member of the benevolent and protective Order of Elks Lodge Number 1246 in 1931, George Baldwin and his family have been fixtures in Summit for over 150 years. Take a tour of the property maps around City Hall, and you'll see no shortage of Baldwins. George Baldwin begat Clinton Baldwin, Clinton Baldwin begat Ralph Baldwin, and Ralph Baldwin begat our esteemed CFO, Tammy Baldwin. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Palowski. That was a great historical minute. I loved the tie-in to today. It's fantastic. Very good. All right. We do have the pleasure of having one presentation today. This is from Lisa Hibbs, who's the VP of Operations and Government Relations from GEA. Is that correct?
From Government, that's Government Energy Aggregation. I am with Commercial Utility Consultants, and with me tonight is also Vicky Malloy with Concord Energy Services. We partner on these GEA programs.
Yeah. And so, Councilman Smallwood, would you like to give a little introduction before the presentation?
Sure. So I met with, via Zoom, of course, Lisa and Vicky several months ago. I believe we first met in maybe May?
Sounds right.
Early May. And I met with also Donna Patel. Donna Patel introduced me to them from the Environmental Commission. And they thought it would be nice to have a conversation to talk about our energy costs that our residents have to pay on an annual basis to JCP&amp;L. And they were very accurate in the fact that they told me that in July, JCP&amp;L were going to go up on their energy costs, and that this is an alternative to JCP&amp;L in terms of purchasing power. I don't want to steal your thunder, but...
Steal away.
There are alternatives to purchasing power with other municipalities to lower our costs, and JC, but not replace JCP&amp;L as the delivery. So I'm going to leave it up to you, and you can...
I'll give you the regulatory rationale behind all of those statements made by Councilman Smallwood. Thank you so much. So yes, this is a program that is regulated by the Board of Public Utilities, Division of Rate Council, and Department of Community Affairs all have a hand in this process. All right. So I just want to backtrack for two seconds. We want, I want to talk to you about the way that energy is delivered and the separation of delivery from supply. In 1999, New Jersey deregulated separating out delivery from supply. The only thing the energy aggregation program addresses is the supply side of the equation. So unfortunately, we cannot provide any savings opportunity on the distribution side of your JCP&amp;L bill, but certainly we would try to do so on the supply side. So utility rates are set in the state of New Jersey through the Basic Generation Service Auction, which is regulated by the Board of Public Utilities. It's held every February, and rates accepted during that auction take effect in June of that same year. So right now, energy suppliers in the state of New Jersey are these folks. So right now, these are the awarded suppliers from February 2024. We would be looking to replace these folks with a different third-party supplier. It's the only thing that changes. We're just replacing the Basic Generation Service suppliers and that higher price with a lower price with a different licensed third-party supplier in the state. So what is community energy aggregation? The community energy aggregation, so it's, sorry, the Energy Aggregation Act of 2002 was passed allowing municipalities to aggregate government accounts to achieve savings, if possible, over what was being offered by the utility. If we can achieve a lower rate for the government accounts, you would go with a different third-party supplier at the lower rate, saving taxpayer dollars, right? Making them stretch a little bit further. In 2013, sorry, in 2012, New Jersey Administrative Code Title 14, Chapter 4, Subchapter 6 deals with government energy aggregation programs. It allows the municipality to aggregate the residential accounts to see if you can get a lower rate for the residence accounts versus what they're currently paying through their utility, through the Basic Generation Service suppliers. If you go to auction and an award can be made, there has to be savings for the residents, otherwise you can't move forward. Then an award, if we receive pricing that's favorable, you can make an award. That is up to the municipality or the cooperative that you join. That is not something that we, as energy consultants, make those decisions. We could certainly make recommendations, but the ultimate decision is up to either the lead agency for a cooperative or the municipality itself if you're in a standalone program. So again, it's an opportunity to offer savings to residents. We do have, in our energy programs now, the option for residents to opt into a 100% renewable energy product. It is an opt-in option, an opt-up option, if you will. I know that a lot of folks go into a third-party supply contract for additional green energy. This way, they have all of the protections offered through the energy aggregation program and oversight by the Board of Public Utilities, budget stability, all of those things offered through the program, but they get the 100% renewable energy as well. So this is the toe in the water conversation with you all. We do have four cooperatives right now, two under contract, two are not. One is a renewable energy program. That is Sustainable Monmouth. They have required additional renewable baked into their standard offering. So that's a little bit different, but we do have 26 towns right now under contract. Through the cooperatives, we also have the city of Hoboken also under contract at present. The energy market has been a bit of a challenge over the past few years. Our programs sort of all ended at the same time, in November 2021. That was sort of at the tail end of the COVID issues and the shutdowns and things like that, and then the energy market just really took off. I do want to touch on one quick slide, which, we talk about renewable energy. Right now, the state, in the state of New Jersey, the minimum required renewable energy baked into the Basic Generation Service, so any supplier in the state of New Jersey, be it through the cooperative or be it through Basic Generation Service, is it 27.5%? That does, I'm sorry, 29.5% that does jump to 37.5%, and it goes up exponentially from there. There are challenges on the market for that additional renewable. It's getting expensive, and that's part of the reason that you're seeing the Basic Generation Service rates go up. It's also becoming a challenge for us to be competitive in the current market for those additional renewable energy demands as supply lags a little bit behind. We're building, we have, we have things in the pipeline, but building them out and connecting them to the power grid is a bit delayed. So with that, I will let you know that in this packet, there is a lot of information. We cover, and I believe that this will be shared with council tomorrow-ish. So we talk about our cooperative experience. There are savings details in here for each of our cooperatives. There's the name of the towns in each of the cooperatives, and these are sort of built-in options. Should the city of Summit want to move forward with joining one of these cooperatives, they already exist. They already have a history of saving residents money, and a lot of them have been around for quite some time, 2016, 2017, 2019. And we just started the Garden State Community Energy Co-op in 2023. There are three towns already signed up for that one. So with that, next steps would be, if this is something that you do want to consider, next step would be an ordinance. The ordinance allows, authorizes the city of Summit to offer the GEA program. It does not obligate you to do that. If you don't have the ordinance, you can't participate. If you do have the ordinance, it just allows you to go ahead and go to auction. If you wanted to join one of the co-ops, that would be a resolution, and we can provide all of those documents if and when you are ready for them.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up right now to questions from council.
For your council president?
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for you. So I try to do the 100% renewable, but I realized it was, I think I'm buying it from really far away. Is this, this would allow us to buy New Jersey-generated 100% renewable if we wanted?
You could. It's going to be as expensive as you're seeing it in your individual, it gets very expensive. The closer you get to it being generated, the pricier it gets because there's so little of it.
Okay.
The 100% renewable is sort of Ohio wind that, it's the same thing that you're seeing probably in your third-party supply contract. We certainly could look to PJM grown, or PJM generated, or New Jersey generated, but that adds cost.
Oh, okay. And then I know that's an option for people. Is that the cooperative that allows that, or is that the GEA that allows that, or both?
That is, that's a combination of both. So the regulations themselves allow for it, and also it is up to the cooperative or the municipality to offer that to residents if they want to. We have just seen over the past five years, it's just a no-brainer to offer it. This is an opt-out program. That means that if the city moves forward, everybody in town that is with JCP&amp;L would be included in the program. They can opt out. There's a 30-day opt-out period at the beginning of the launch of a program, during which we would hold town hall-style meetings. There's a mailer that goes out. The material in those opt-out kits or information kits is regulated by the Board of Public Utilities. That gets mailed, U.S. Postal Service, to every eligible resident. I would not suggest doing that at election time because those kits get mixed in with all sorts of campaign materials, things like that. We're experiencing a little bit of that with the city of Hoboken right now. But we would do town hall-style meetings, and we would really lean into the city's experience with best ways to communicate with residents. Some towns use Nixle, some towns have a newsletter or something like that, senior centers, libraries, places like that where we can really get in touch with the residents to talk to them about, hey, everyone has to be in. It's part of the regulations that govern the program. Not everyone has to stay in. We do have a permanent opt-out feature as well, meaning if you do join a co-op, it's one that's been around since 2017, they tend to have, you know, a 12-month program, a 15-month program. So there's new program information coming out each time. For a resident that does not want to be disturbed, there's a permanent opt-out feature. They will not be notified or have to opt out of the program each time. They would have to opt in instead. During that 30-day window, no accounts are enrolled with the third-party supplier. Everybody's just sort of kind of making a decision. After that 30-day period, anyone who has not opted out, opted up, done something, that's when we send that list to JCP&amp;L to say, hey, please include these residents in this energy aggregation program. JCP&amp;L then sends a confirmation letter to the residents saying, hey, it's, we've been informed that it's your intention to participate in this energy aggregation program. If this is a mistake, let us know within seven days, and you won't be included. So there's a second, there's the second mailing in case they missed the opt-out mailer. There is the confirmation from the utility that goes out as well. Residents can opt in and out of this program at any time, for no reason, for any reason, during the term of the contract, no fees or penalties ever.
Okay. And then my last question. Is it really, is it, or do we have the ability to, I know I'm probably getting really ahead of myself, is it really easy to convey the savings that people will get? Because I know that's a really complicated thing when it comes to like...
We have an online savings tool. So all residents have to do is go online, set up their password, and they will see month to month their actual savings through the program. It's also on their JCP&amp;L bill each month, but rather than have residents have to track that on their own, figure out how to read my bill, I get it online, I... that on their own, figure out how to read my bill, I get it online, I don't know, we actually have an online savings tool to make it as simple as possible. We also would provide the city of Summit with their own login and password where you could see the aggregate savings for your residents. You would not be able to see individual savings other than your own, but you would be able to see how the program is performing.
That's great. Thank you.
Other questions?
Through you, Council President.
Yes, please.
First, I wish we could get all of our 22,500 residents on board, but a lot of people just don't, you know, they don't know, they don't pay attention, they, you know, they go about their lives. I can imagine waking up one day and say, the city enrolled me into something that I had no clue about. Why not have an opt-in as opposed to?
It was originally written that way and the Board of Public Utilities changed it because in order to offer these programs, you have to have the aggregate usage. There's a 20% opt-out. I mean, people, I mean, overall, there's a 20% opt-out, people proactively opting out of the program. But the city of Hoboken has 24,000 residents. We're rolling out their program right now for the third time. They actually clamor for this program at this point. So yes, first time through, there's going to be that initial, hey, how, how can you make this decision for me? We're just taking what the state does, bringing it down to the local level. It's the same auction process. We have the same oversight that the basic generation service auction has through Department of Community Affairs. It's just by bringing it to the local level, we achieve a savings. Again, they can opt out. The worst thing that's going to happen is they save money those few months that they were in the program. And if they realize, hey, you did this to me, I don't want it, we opt them back out, they go and pay the higher price through the basic generation service.
Worst thing that will happen is they'll call.
They'll call you. They'll call you, but then you tell them to call me. But again, you, we have references as well that we can provide to the city. So we work with 99 municipalities on this program. So you are not the first town to have to decide whether you want to make this decision for your residents. And it's okay if you don't want to offer it, that's fine. We just wanted to make you all aware.
And last question, I know that you were talking about savings. I mean, we all want to, want to talk about money for savings. And just in general, what is the average savings?
That's a difficult question to answer because the market, right now, the city of Hoboken is, their savings has to be around 8%. For the two co-op, higher, well, now, yes, now it is. It's about to, come December, it's much higher. But that just, you know, we hit the market on a great day.
That's per household?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, that's a universal, the price to compare with the basic generation service is here, our program rate is here, that's the delta between the two. So someone, I always say, there's no average savings because you could have two of the same house next to each other and two completely different usage patterns. You could have somebody who's not using a lot of electricity and then somebody who's got every light on, every appliance plugged in and running at the same time. So even the same size house, you will see quite a difference in that usage. So we always look to what is the difference between the price to compare and the rate that we achieved? And that's sort of where we start on the day of auction is. There's a 5% saving, there's a 7% saving, sometimes there's a 13% savings. On average, I would say comfortably 8% since we've been doing these programs since 2014. It's, it's great.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Sure. Other questions?
Through you, Council President.
Yes, please.
As far as the auction process, how does that work with the municipality? Because the commodity has to be at the time of the auction.
Correct.
So that means the governing body would have to be on standby that day when you do the auction to make the award. Is that correct?
Correct, unless you are in a cooperative and then the lead agency is making that decision on behalf of the participating members of the co-op, yes.
Second question. On an average bill, the bill will show transmission costs and supply costs separately. So I'm assuming that transmission is going to be through JC P&amp;L's line or?
Transmission is included in the, in the basic generation service price in your supply charges, but distribution, yes, is separate. Let me find my sample. There it is. So yes, so on your JC P&amp;L bill right now, distribution is separated from your supply charges. The only thing that changes through the program on the JC P&amp;L bill is where it says basic generation service charges right now, it would be replaced with supplier XYZ for your energy aggregation program. And then in the message section, there will be a message that says, hey, you're in with a third-party supplier. If you were on the basic generation service this month, you would be paying X. So you can see it. So you can see the supply charges through the supplier for the, the energy aggregation program and you would also see what you would have paid if you were on the basic generation service with JC P&amp;L.
And if I heard you correctly, you said you have to be in an opt-out program, there is no opt-in program?
There is no opt-in, only an opt-out.
Okay, thank you so much.
Council President, I do have.
Yes, please.
How, how do you, what's the mechanism for opting out? Is it, is it portal, is it paper?
It's everything. It's paper. In that information packet, there will be an opt-out card with a postage-paid envelope that gets mailed back to the energy consultant or the supplier, however the cooperative decides to work it. Those are processed and there is a check-off box on there if they want to not only opt out from this round of the program, but permanently.
Is it offered in a different language?
Yes, we can offer it in any language that you need it in. And we also have a toll-free number, it's a hotline. All they do is process opt-outs, they do not answer questions about the program. They literally just opt people out all day long. And then there's also the web portal, same portal where the online savings tool is. Residents can opt up into 100% renewable, opt out completely, change their minds mid-stream, opt back in, all of that can be done online, yes. And there will be a page and you can look and Rosemarie, I will provide you, I believe I provided it to Kevin, but we'll give you some sample web pages of live programs that are going on now so you can get a taste and a feel for what that looks like.
Council President, one more question.
Yes, please, Mr. Tucci.
The term of the auction, is it annually that your auction goes on or is it a three-year term, five-year term?
It can only, they can be up to 24-month terms, that's in the regulations, they can't go beyond 24-month. They can be as short as nine, they can be anywhere in between, they can be as short as three, six. We don't recommend that, that's a lot of disruption for such a short hit. Nine-month is the shortest we've gone and that was the pilot, that was actually the pilot program where we first rolled out the 100% renewable opt-up. Right now, we have a 15-month contract for both of our co-ops and a longer contract term for Hoboken, but that's just sort of where the market was on that day. And we talked, we talked to you about those options.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes. I wanted to give everybody else an opportunity to ask her. So a couple of things, I'm really glad you put up the JC P&amp;L bill. One of the things that really sold me about this is that more importantly, when it comes to money, it's not going to cost the city anything to make this change. We would just simply create an ordinance to allow this and then they would, I guess, take it from there and walk us step-by-step on getting this, but it wouldn't cost the city anything to opt into this program. Secondly, we only adopt this program if it actually saves our residents money. So, and then from there, the residents have an option to opt out if they so choose. There, if they do nothing, they'll get the same JC P&amp;L bill. The only thing that changes is where they're getting their supply from, correct? And obviously she mentioned before that they will see their cost savings on each and every bill. The other point that I wanted to bring up is the opt-up program, which Andy alluded to for, you can opt up to 100% renewable energy. Obviously, that may cost a little bit more just simply because of the limited supply of it and where they have to actually purchase it, correct? So for, for those of you who would like to have 100% renewable energy, that option is available. If you currently have solar or if you are purchasing a, through a third-party already, you can just simply opt out of this program.
They're not included to begin with.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so when we get the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. When we get the list from JC P&amp;L, they identify net metered customers, we pull them out. They do not provide us with information for anyone currently enrolled with a third-party supplier of their own because we could possibly do them harm by switching them over if they have an early termination penalty or some kind of a fee, they would incur that while I'm trying to save them money. So they are not included in the list provided by JC P&amp;L.
Okay, great, even better. JC P&amp;L will, won't go knock on their doors and say, hey, you should come back to us?
No one from this program will ever knock on doors or make phone calls. There's no telemarketing, there's no door-to-door solicitation. Funny thing, once a town does the program and it starts to roll out, third-party suppliers learn about it, know about it, they read the same newspaper articles, they track the BPU website, they see who's offering programs, and they will perhaps come into town, knock on doors and say, hi, I'm with the city of Summit's GEA program. I need to see your bill to make sure that you're enrolled. And then they get slammed. So we do not door knock. All of the information is mailed US Postal Service to residents. Everything that we do in town is through common council and staff. So we would really lean into you to, to help us get the word out.
Okay. And the closest municipality I believe is Milburn, who just joined.
Milburn for their first time there, September 2024. Yeah, their residents are in the 100-an area energy cooperative. The names, please don't be alarmed by the names of these, they are not geographically tied to their name. As long as the participating towns in that cooperative have a JC P&amp;L town in there, you could certainly join that cooperative.
Great. Other questions? I had a couple. So Councilman Small would allude to the process where we, as a, as a council, we would approve the rate that you would come to us for X term. If it was higher than the JC P&amp;L, we would just say?
You can't accept it.
We can't accept it, exactly. So the first protection for residents is to know that it will not be higher than their current JC P&amp;L bill.
Correct.
Secondly, even if for some odd reason that a resident would rather go with JC P&amp;L, in that regard, they would have the option to do that at any time.
Absolutely, at any time.
And for a resident, it would be a seamless transition, meaning they get the same bill every month, it looks the same except for the detail that you alluded to, that's a little bit different. So for them, their life doesn't change.
Their life does not change.
Except that if it is an 8% savings, as you mentioned, 8%, $100 electricity bill every month, that's almost 100 bucks extra in your pocket. Not bad. The other question I have is community engagement around rollout. Now, my thought around this, before we would look to pass an ordinance on this, and I understand that it gives us the option to join, I would think that we would want to do some, a community engagement prior to the passage of an ordinance, just so that our residents understand what this is all about. And is that, I guess my question is, what is sort of, I know there's not one-size-fits-all, but what is some, what is a common process that governing bodies would adopt with you to do specifically community engagement around this?
Some towns have done Survey Monkey or something like that on a website, you just kind of put it on your webpage, website and say, hey, town just considering this. I'm sure that we could put together a video. I'm, I haven't consulted with Vicki at all, so she may be sitting there going, what? We could create a video, a very generic video, just about what GEA is, that you could certainly put on the website. We could come do town halls, whatever you want us to do.
Great. And then my last question is, you mentioned that there's various terms that are available, like a nine months to a 24 months. So say we went into a 24-month one and they auctioned power once a year and then my understanding is that's the rate that gets set for the prior 12 months. Say we go into a 24-month contract in August, this gets reset for the spring and for some reason, it's lower. What happens then?
Of all the problems to have, we would go back to the supplier and say, hey, you know and I know, the basic generation service is about, the price is about to drop below our program rate. Can you match? Can you match the 5% savings, 8% savings? Can you offer us the delta between? There are, there are clauses in, there's a whole section in the supplier agreement that covers early termination, termination clauses, things like that. Depending on the supplier appetite, they may say, no, I can't, let's just send everybody back, let's just end it early, which we've done.
And so that would be, again, we would say, okay, we're just going to remove ourselves and I guess there would be language around doing that. And that, and if that would happen, what seamlessly, our residents would just go back to JC P&amp;L?
Seamlessly back to JC P&amp;L. Now, anytime that we change the price, change the term from what was originally agreed upon, we must notice the participating residents that are still in the program of said change. And that's a 30-day requirement, that is part of the regulations. So residents would be notified, again, US Postal Service, probably a postcard, but also we would again look to newsletters, can we post something at the library on a bulletin board, something like that, just to alert residents that, hey, the program's ending early, you're going back to the basic generation service through JC P&amp;L effective this date.
Thank you.
Council President, just one more question. I recall it was a hurricane in Texas storm or something like that, right? And prices went through the roof and the utility said, well, you're with a third-party, we can't help you, you have to pay and you have to pay these exorbitant fees. Can you elaborate on that and how that happens through storms and?
So that is an individual contract. The polar vortex of, I believe it was 2014, actually affected New Jersey residents. Ask me how I know. So I believe that, I don't know if an individual third-party supplier can still pass all of those costs on to a person in a contract like that. This program, the price is fixed for the term of the contract. They cannot do that.
Thank you.
Part of the BPU regs, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
I wasn't trying to trip you up there, but that was a good.
No, no, it's all, no, I agree 100%. No, but that, but again, those are the consumer protections offered through the GEA program that you can provide to your residents that they can't necessarily get on the open market for themselves. They don't have to stay in, but at least there's some budget security and there's the predatory piece that's not there.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so we know how to get ahold of you.
You do.
Correct? Okay, so we'll discuss internally, figure out which committee might want to bandy this about a little bit more, but thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm getting over.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to get into the meat of our meeting today. We have an ordinance for introduction. Madam Mayor, will you please read the ordinance for introduction?
I think Madam Clerk should.
Oh, Madam Clerk!
Not the mayor, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not doing it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. ID number 11560, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 4-9.6, Minimum Standards of Performance, Subsection D, Minimum Storage Requirements.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance, as read, 11560, amending the code for the tow operator's storage requirements. This amendment seeks to modify Chapter 4, General License, Section 4-6B of the city ordinance regarding the storage facility requirements of towing service. The current ordinance mandates that tow companies must have their storage facilities located within city limits. However, there are no heavy-duty tow services currently operating within the city and using a heavy-duty tow service from outside of the city would put the city in violation of this ordinance. The proposed amendment will allow heavy-duty towing companies to have their storage facilities within a mile radius of city limits. This change ensures that the city can use heavy-duty towing services in compliance with the ordinance, addressing the current service gap. It also provides greater flexibility for lightweight-duty tow service, ensuring more consistent and efficient operations, especially if the scheduled tow provider is unavailable or ceases to operate. I move to open this ordinance for hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So our hearing date on this ordinance will be November 6th.
Correct. That's a Wednesday?
Wednesday, the day after the election.
Council President, we usually ask the council if they'd like to make any comments, but we withhold the public comment for the hearing.
Right, so at this time, any council members have a comment? Yes?
So my question is. Thank you, my question is, when I look on the bill list and drive everybody crazy asking questions the day before the meeting, will this, I see a lot of towing charges for different, different companies. Will we, and you don't have to answer me now, but my question is, will we be going out for an RFP for a specific tow truck company for our vehicles? I'm just, do we have an RFP right now, or is this, I guess that?
It's generally not done by RFP. What they do is they'll, they'll do, they'll have a series of tow truck operators, not just one. Because you could have multiple accidents or multiple things going on where tow trucks are needed. So many towns have, they qualify, it's RFQs, and they qualify a series of tow truck operators who meet the various specifications. And I mean, the, the fact of the matter is, you have 24, you know, if a truck flips, you need, as, as the councilman is talking about, one of those huge, heavy-duty cranes to, to flip the truck. So most towns have it. And they, they model it after, you know, looking at the state, because the New Jersey State Police, because a lot of what happens with tow trucks, and people don't realize, probably the biggest user of tow trucks in the town is your police department. So if they pull somebody over for DWI, if there's a car accident, if somebody doesn't have insurance, somebody doesn't have a license, they have the car towed and impounded, because they don't want it to be unsafe. So there's a whole law that deals with towing, law enforcement toes. And this will give your police more opportunities. Because the one thing that happens with, if you only had one towing company, people get, end up waiting for hours. The other thing people don't realize is everyone says, oh, I have roadside assistance, I have this car, I have roads. Well, if you have, if you have a car problem in 24, roadside assistance isn't going out. 287, 24, Parkway, you need, that's all bid out by certain towers on certain mileage points.
Other questions?
And to get our police off the side of the road as quickly as possible is great. I mean, there's some service providers that could be right there, you know.
Other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Exturnin?
Aye. Okay, we're moving on to resolutions. Our first set of resolutions comes from Finance, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11540, and this resolution approves our city's submission of responses to the best practice inventory program. The results of this annual best practice survey determine how much of our allocation of consolidated municipal property tax relief and emerging tax relief aid that will be dispersed to us. There is a minimum score on this survey to receive 100% of that aid, and Summit has once again exceeded that minimum score on the survey and will receive 100% of our funding. The answers to this survey, which you can see in the full agenda packet, are pretty interesting. It gives you insight into some pretty interesting New Jersey best practices that our city meets, including publishing of audit, audit reports, network security, cybersecurity readiness. I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Comments from the public? Have any comments from council?
I just have one, which would be thank our CFO and her team for doing this. It's a lot of work and well-done, a lot of very specific details. Tammy, when do you start doing this, the work for this?
Through you, Council President, as soon as they release it. This year, they released it about mid-September. Over the years, it has gotten more inclusive, so I have to work with all of the department heads, so everybody kind of plays a part in this. And there are several, as you noticed, unscored questions, which the state is looking for information.
So it's more of a pass/fail, you don't get more, more money if you get a better score?
No. It's 100%, but it does decline. If you don't reach at least 35 yeses or perspectives, or it's not applicable to you, it does decline by a percentage for how many less you have. We've been fortunate enough that we've always had enough best practices, we've exceeded it, so we haven't had any issue.
And then when do we submit it? Do we already submit this?
By Friday.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
After you approve.
Any other questions or comments from council? I would just like to say thank you again, Tammy. This is, I know you put all this together, but best, best practices are across a lot of different areas of, of city staff. So thanks to all the city staff for doing a fantastic job. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Councilman Miniger, Finance, number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11541, and this resolution authorizes a two-year contract extension for our on-call HVAC maintenance and repair service from January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026, not to exceed $50,000 per contract year. The initial awarding of this contract to Industrial Cooling Corporation back in 2023 allowed for one, two-year extension. This resolution seeks to exercise that option and with the same terms and conditions that are currently in place. The vendor has been beneficial to the city to have on-call, and so I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Miniger, Finance, number three, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11557, and this resolution authorizes bond council services through the end of 2025, not to exceed $60,000. The agreement with Hawkins Delafield and Wood LLP provides the city services that include preparation of capital bond ordinances, issuance of bonds and notes to finance those bond ordinances, and assistance in continuing disclosure requirements. And the one-year extension here includes, once again, the same rates we have been offered in the past. Having spoken with CFO Baldwin about the possibility of going to bid for something like this in the future, it was strongly recommended that this year, as we are engaged in the search process for a new city administrator, any request for proposal for this particular set of services should be postponed until after that position is filled. I, I completely agree with that. Otherwise, I move to adopt this resolution.
One second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? I'll just make one comment. We have a couple of professional service agreements that are on the agenda for this evening. And there has been some discussion about, well, are we just asking for bids and RFP-ing these things? And Councilman Miniger spoke to this one specifically. I think there is value in a process that we would engage in going out to bid on these services on some regular basis. There is, there is work to do around that. You have to prepare the RFP, you have to award it, you have to vet the applicants. And then once the person's awarded, it's a lot of work on city staff as well to train them on how they would interact with the city. Every city's different. So it is a lot of work. So there is, there's, there's definitive benefit for going out to try and find the best person, the best group, for the right price, but there's also a cost involved. And I think something that I would recommend that we do, maybe starting first quarter, is that the administrative committee look to look at all our contracts and look to schedule some rational, I don't know, a third of them may be going out for RFP every year, to have a schedule, so city staff know that this year, they need to prepare those RFPs. We can have a best practice where we look at these on a regular basis, but it's transparent. City staff understands the process, they can prepare for it. They're not going to be surprised that this comes up in the last meeting in October. And then we can move forward. The public knows that we are always vetting for the best price, for the best services for our community. So that's something I would like to propose. And, and that, that committee could start working on that maybe as soon as next meeting. The, and, and again, I just wanted to say that for this one, but I think that those same comments would be appropriate for some of the other resolutions on here. All right, all in fa, oh.
I just have one comment, I would say that, you know, some of the feedback that we always hear is, well, you know, our professionals are wonderful and why should we look? And of course, they're wonderful. But I think that it's, it is our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer, again, to, to make sure that we, we do go out, and I think we'll all learn something as well. And if you're the best professional, you'll probably still come out on top. But as an elected official, it's always good to get other opinions and a different set of eyes, so nobody should take it personally when we say we want to do an RFP or RFQ. It's just, it's simply what you elected us to do.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Hamlet, Capital Projects and Community Services, number one.
Sure, can I bundle these, or would you prefer I don't bundle them?
I think you can.
I'm okay to bundle them?
Many objections? Okay, so we have.
So we're bundling one, two, and thr, and three?
Yes.
Okay.
And we can talk about them separately if needed, but I think it just makes sense to do. How would I, how would you like me to do that, Rosie?
I would just go one by one, just, and then you make the motion to adopt.
This is ID 11484, Amending Professional Services Agreement, 2024 City Planner and Zoning Support Services for additional fees of $30,000. And that would be for Burgess and Associates. The second one is to amend, sorry, ID 11483, to amend Professional Services Agreement, 2024 Legal Services, Affordable Housing Attorney Fees, not to exceed $26,000. And that is for Nancy Holmes, sorry, Serenian Edwards, Boo Zach and Nolan, our Affordable Housing Attorney. And then ID 11489, to amend Professional Services Agreement, 2024 Consulting Engineering Services, additional fees not to exceed $35,000, which is stonefield engineering. I would like to move these resolutions.
Second. Comments from the public?
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, at 11 Sunset Drive. These resolutions before council total $91,000 in professional fees beyond what had originally been authorized. As Ms. Hamlet noted, the Outside Planner, Engineer, and Affordable Housing Council. In Janu, or at the beginning of the year, council authorized a total of $170,000 for these professionals, and subsequently authorized an additional $30,000 for Housing Council. So all in, our professional fees are suddenly 71% higher than originally authorized and anticipated. And the explanations in the council packet provide no real detail for why, why this is happening. So before council spends our tax dollars like this, I think it owes Summit residents a fuller explanation of why the increased spending. As taxpayers, we rely upon you to be good stewards of our funds, and so please take the time to demonstrate to us that you are.
Hi, Erwin Miller, Five Knob Hill Drive. I understand there are expenses that the city needs to pay for our services, and we appreciate all the people who provide services to our residents. And hopefully, if we're looking to save money, we can look at the state and federal level and the money that is spent there, and the people we elect at the state and federal level that spend our money at those levels. And we shouldn't be penny-wise and pound-fullish in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council?
I have one.
I was just gonna defer right back to you, Delia, because we know, we know what it is, right? I mean, you know.
Yeah, but let me, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I think I spent a collective total of probably four hours yesterday and perhaps another, a few hours with this gentleman, Augusto, here today. Rosie, I'm not sure if you can pull up a couple of those graphs in an email.
I can't do emails from here.
Oh, got it, okay, all right. Well, I have some amazing graphs, and the good news is that this isn't costing the, the City of Summit taxpayer another dollar. This is coming from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Augusto, can you just explain a little bit about what we talked about today? You were so wonderful, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but we do have answers for you. For all, all three of these firms, we can identify for that Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yes, so absolutely. While it may seem concerning that there is approximate $90,000 increase, the truth of the matter is that as statewide, the city enters into a process of, it's round three, round four, affordable housing obligations. Next year, we're prepping towards state cross-acceptance and perhaps a master plan reexamination. These increases are mostly, or the vast majority, due to increased round three Affordable Housing Trust Fund use. If we compare 2023 nominal spending to 2024 on our operational aspects, they're very close. They're basically one-to-one. And these are all the non-refundable items, matters of procedure that the city handles. What has increased is the necessity to have work conducted for our affordable housing, bills to escrow, legal services towards affordable housing. For example, you know, just having our wonderful attorney, Nancy Holm, work out all the implications there, all the work conducted by Mount Laurel Subcommittee, all affordable housing matters. So the, the, I don't know, an eye-catching implication is that in the real difference from 2023 to 24, there's only an approximate 15% difference on operational spending, which is fairly insignificant. We're talking about maybe a couple thousand dollars of actual taxpayer money, but the rest is predominantly escrow. I hope that explains it.
If I may, we, I think we battle over our Excel spreadsheet pivot tables today. We, we went through just about every invoice, and, you know, I commend you for, for your due diligence in that one. And I will say the other thing that we talked about today, because I've been talking to the council president, is I think anything in this bucket will be approved through this man, Tom Tucci, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think, look, we want to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. I think it's a, it's a valid objective, obviously. There, there needs to be a, a tight process around when we do authorize these outside services to spend money, it's a, I think it needs to have a good process where multiple sets of eyes are on that. Ultimately, it should be, it should sit at the city administrator level to get, to approve these requests that may come up from department heads. And that's where it should reside. And, and at that level, the city administrator has the big picture that they can see, how it relates to our budget, how it relates to our overall spending, et cetera. I don't know if you want to add to that, Mr. Tucci?
Yes, and there will be free approvals prior to any work being done. You got to get authorization to do it. So anything above and beyond the contract, under state public contracts law, contract cannot be exceeded more than 20% anyway. So there's a lock in there, but nobody should be expending any dollars beyond what the governing body approves. And if there is extenuating circumstance, it's gonna have to go through a process.
Thank you. Other council comments?
Yep.
Yes, please, Councilman Barton.
I'll jump on, off on all of that stuff. I agree, I agree. I do want to understand a little bit further how, how we're gonna have it be the case that anything now that we've approved, be, above and beyond here, is gonna be attributed to affordable housing. But I'll make a few other points first. My reservations about this speak to two main issues, which are control, which under there is accountability and prioritization of what work is being done. And the second is the fiscal responsibility piece. So access to professionals would be previously centralized under the administrator and the council president. And when we were at full strength at City Hall, it could be determined what questions or information could be answered in-house, or what projects could be done in-house, or what needed to be farmed out to a professional. And then it would protect against mismatch, doing it that way would protect against mismatched information. So one member of council, or two members of council, or half of council has information on something that the other half of council doesn't have. And it also protects against wasting taxpayer money on projects that department heads might not know is happening, the city administrator might not know is happening, council members might not know is even happening. So the, those projects and the conversations between professionals can then take on a life of their own, and then they're, they, they go off to the races by way of billing. So what we got, why we're at this point, where we're raising these all, and one of them for the second time, is that we didn't have the and one of them for the second time, is that we didn't have the, the processes in place. We, I'm uncomfortable, regardless of whether it's coming from the trust fund or whether it's coming from the general fund, I'm uncomfortable raising it again because of the implications on the process and the budget. But I did speak with the council president before. I get we need the services, we need an in-house planner to be sitting here, that, that, working on that. What we do not need at this moment is those professionals to be working on ancillary projects, like ordinances that we may want to implement in the future that are not necessary to the operation of City Hall. And so we do have to be very clear, and we, we agreed on that before, what will be prioritized and what will be deprioritized very clearly. I'm really happy to hear about pre-authorization before anything is done, so that we don't duplicate work. I'll close by saying I would prefer that we hone the scope of what we are asking for from each of these three and lower the amount of money that we're appropriating tonight to each of them. I understand those probably represent a material change to the resolution and may not be possible, but I will state that that's where my preference is, because I do not think we should be writing a blank check for up to $30,000, $26,000, and $35,000. We must be more disciplined. So I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
You had another comment, Councilwoman?
I just, my only comment is when I said it was directly attributed to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, what I was trying to explain, which I think Augusto tried to explain better, is that the increases were due to the fourth round of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The affordable, fourth round for affordable housing. The, the increases are specifically linked to that. I am totally fine, and I've told you this, I don't think we, we need to stonefield. I would not have put on the agenda tonight. But you, Greg Vartan, in our committee meeting, you were okay with stonefield. I do not think that we need to approve that right now. But if our city engineer is telling us that that is the right thing to do right now, I would be willing to not, not approve that tonight. However, as our, as our, our, Augusto had mentioned, I think we have pretty good justification for our city planner and our affordable housing attorneys. But I do think we have money with other engineering firms, or there might be some other ideas for surveying.
There are always other options out there. You don't have to utilize one single firm. There are many licensed land surveyors out that you can utilize for these processes. The other thing is you need to look at regulations with COA. A lot of times, COA doesn't even require a land survey. If you have an official tax map that's up to date, they accept that as official mapping. So there are other processes that need to be examined here.
Right, sure. Another, one other comment?
Yeah, very, very quickly though, just to be clear though. Not everything so far that has happened this year, especially our planner and the, especially the planning services, not everything is related to the third or fourth round of affordable housing. So we can't point the finger and say, that's the only reason why we have to make these adjustments. There has been work done on various other ancillary things that are not necessary to the operation of City Hall that have been worked on, that I would suggest we put on the shelf and say, we're done with those for now and we're going to get through the rest of this year, spending as little of this increase as possible. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Three, Council President.
Yes, please.
I have no idea what these other things are that were worked on. And I, I, I not read them in the packet. And now I'm concerned about voting for this. And if it's not critical, I guess if, I know Aaron's not here tonight, you're a surrogate for Aaron, right? Yeah. Is it critical that we vote on this tonight?
Well, there are planning services. We need a planner to work with the zoning board. He has to get paid. So some of these ancillary things they do, there are things that they have to do around how the city processes. So I completely agree with Councilman Vartan that we do have to have a priority around, like, some things will put off till next year, that we have to tackle then. But we need planners to help with the day-to-day running of the city. That, if we don't have a planner, no one's going to help the zoning board out for the rest of the year. So, so these are things that have to have happen. So I, I, I appreciate your concern, I think it's a good one. But there are things, you know, the, these, these professionals provide support to our city staff on a regular basis. And I think with City Administrator Tucci, working with this, where we, where, like, they have to get pre-approved, I'm hoping these numbers don't get hit. And if they do get hit, there should be a very good reason for it, that we would be informed of. But we, we do have to have the professionals working with, with the town.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Council President.
Council President, if I may say one more thing, one of the things, you know, we dissected this today to the level of nauseam. And, and we will probably weed this down in the next week and a half. But when we went through all these invoices, you have to remember, we're using Neglia Engineering, sorry, Neglia Consulting Firm, basically to replace our zoning officer when she retired for the last, since January, January, February, March, April, May, June, tune of eight grand a month. So, and our, our city planner was also, one day a week, utilizing his services to look at zoning permits. And, and there's a lot of things in these bills that I think we need to fine-tune, but 100% that this is, we, we went through it today and everything is line by line. And you can ask Augusto for all the information if you're unsure about anything, but he has it all.
Just one more thing.
Please.
With the hiring of a permanent zoning officer and assistant, a lot of those consulting charges go away now. They're no longer necessary or needed, and you will not see them anymore on the list.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Smallwood.
So just to be clear, we had a full-time city administrator until August, right? We've known that we didn't have a zoning officer, who I believe she gave her retirement notice in March. And when did we hire our zoning officer? Last month? So, you know, when we had staff, full staff, we, we still weren't operating at full staff because there were months without a zoning officer. So in order to get through some of this stuff, and Greg, I don't want to spend this much money as, as you do either. I'm looking at this and like, you know, up to $35,000, up to $26,000, up to $30,000. And I'm trying to figure out, like, why, why are, why are we having to pay for all these, all these steps? Well, one is we didn't have an officer, we didn't have a zoning officer, so we have them to pay for a planner, right?
No, absolutely. And, and one of the things I've had quite a few meetings with staff, as well as Mr. Tucci, a priority is we need to fill in the boxes of our org chart. And you'll see that tonight, that we are beginning to chip away at that. And, and it's imperative that we have good people in the right spots. There's lots of different reasons why some may have not been filled quicker than they, or as quickly as they might have been. But that's a priority, because as we do that, I think, as what I'm hearing, that should bring work back in-house versus with outside services. One other comment, Councilman Kloski?
It's really just a question. Mr. Tucci alluded to an updated tax map. Is our tax map currently up to date?
I believe they were updated about a year ago, so they're pretty much up to date as far as tax map is going.
I think it was two years ago.
Two years, right, it was at close proximity.
So is, is the work on this third resolution to be done to update? When do we need to update our tax map?
Normally, they're done every two to three years.
So is this-
Well, in a lot of communities, they don't do them for 10, 12. Some of them are more fortunate at this point.
Any other comments? I'll just end with a comment. I think Councilwoman Hamlet, thank you for digging in. And thank you for digging in as well, for the numbers. They, they need a lot to sort through. This, though, highlights where we are spending a lot of money. And I think Councilwoman Hamlet spoke to this. A lot of this money is coming out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, is my understanding. Because it, this has to do with satisfying our obligations either to round three or to the upcoming round four. This is the dirty secret that Trenton doesn't talk about. That the amount of money that we spend on lawyers, on planners, that the process that they've created in Trenton is a nightmare. It's a Byzantine, you know, you couldn't make it up if you tried. And you have to have planner after planner and lawyer after lawyer to make sure you're checking every single box. And every time you do that, that's money that doesn't go to affordable housing. It's ridiculous. So I get it, but you know, when, when people start asking, like, why isn't there more affordable housing in New Jersey? How about they make the process simpler? Where we can actually take the money that we raise for affordable housing from fees from developers and actually use it to support affordable housing? Than paying lawyers and planners and all these people who are on the dole, on the dime, who lobby our people in Trenton to get these Byzantine laws passed. And as people who care about affordable housing, how about some of the ire gets put at Trenton to make the rules simpler, so we can actually put money to work to solve the problem? All right, with that, we bundled the first three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move along to capital and community service projects, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 11530. A resolution of the City of Summit supporting the County of Union application to the New Jersey Transportation Authority Local Safety Grant for Improvements to the Intersection of Ashwood Avenue and Morris Avenue. Whereas the City of Summit desires to enhance safety at the intersection of Ashwood Avenue and Morris, the County of Union is preparing a grant application to the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. Whereas the preliminary engineering has identified the intersection of Ashwood and Morris within the municipality of Summit, and a resolution of support is required by the NJTPA application. Whereas the City of Summit supports the application for safety improvements at the intersection of Ashwood and Morris Avenue. I would like to move this resolution.
Second, comments from the public. Comments from council.
I guess I would just have one, this is, if you look at your council packet tonight, there's a pretty picture of the intersection. And for those of you who can't make a left turn, right there on, I think it's right in front of, it's, they're, they're creating a left, like, the, the left turn. Aaron or, Augusto, you might be able to explain it easier, Aaron will be able to explain it. But the left turn from Morris onto Ashwood, and it's a tricky area, so I think it's going to really improve this. So I thank the county for, for doing this. I think it's a really important. Greg, you might be able to, to mention-
Yeah, sure. That, I think, is the main, like, traffic change that's happening. A left turn only lane from Morris onto Ashwood. I live right there and there's accidents like all the time. And I, and part of the improvement is that striping of the street and all those changes, making sure that the intersections are all ADA compliant and all that stuff. But it's a signal replacement project too. And part of the issue is that when you're driving on Ashwood Avenue toward Broad Street, you often miss the, the signal, or people that don't drive it often, miss the signal on, with Morris. And they're looking at the signal by Broad Street, and people don't slow down. And all of a sudden, you're right in the intersection and there's bad accidents that happen there. So this is the county's initiative, they're paying for the entire thing. They are applying for a grant, we are, they're, they're asking of us a resolution of support. And I think we, I would be very enthusiastic about doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects and Community Services, number five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
I'm the lucky one tonight. Okay, this is, sorry, lost my page. This is ID number 11568. As discussed in closed session, this is declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services for the Assistant City Engineer effective October 2nd, 2024. I would like to move this resolution.
Second, comments from the public.
Good evening. Diego Hoichargal Court. Council President, after receiving the gavel, you expressed a desire to help improve how our elected leaders interact with city staff. You also reminded us of the importance of supporting our great staff and working well with them, because they do great things when we let them do their jobs. I am concerned that our great city staff seems to be leaving rapidly. Since the budget passed, 18 resolutions have been placed on common council agendas, declaring vacancies, including four tonight. Two departing officials cost the city approximately $130,000 in settlement salary, including pensions and healthcare that cost close to $250,000 unbudgeted. Also, loss of experience is a hidden cost. One experience, one example was the cancellation of the haunted hike after it had started. More importantly, how much knowledge was lost with the departures of Michael Rogers, Amy Kearns, and particularly Matt Lari. My second concern is that the city seems to be managing expenses via emergency appropriations. That's never a good idea. Since the budget passed, six resolutions, including three today, increased the value of various contracts by a combined total of $170,000. Also, unbudgeted urgent repairs to the Anderson Field House will cost $78,000. Republican council members blamed this repair on last year's council, telling the public that everyone knew that these repairs were needed. This begs the question, if everyone knew, and if the budget passed along party lines, why did the Republican majority not include this needed repair in the close to $5.3 million they plan to devote to tatlock over the next four years? Mr. McTernan, I agree that our elected officials volunteer because they love Summit. However, I submit that pretty much anyone who takes the time to attend these meetings and prepare statements does too. Unbudgeted expenses will cost between 1% and 1.5% of municipal appropriations or approximately the property tax paid by 20 median Summit homes. When we had coffee, I shared that at times I had felt that well-researched feedback was met with gaslighting. These are serious management issues. Will they be addressed seriously or via finger pointing, name-calling, and gaslighting?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Good evening, Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. I believe these, this assistant engineer, maybe you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is an additional position, replacing someone that left? So my understanding is that's supporting personnel. I mean, I might be a little off-base, but I do know that building projects in Summit have increased. And one of the things I know that we tried to institute years ago was a, a online submission of blueprints through the building department. However, when we did that, we didn't increase staffing. So you may be able to submit more, more paperwork, but there still aren't people to review it. So I think this is a great addition, it's going to help our Department of Engineering work better. There is an expense, expense to that, there's no doubt about it. But I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great add. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the haunted trail ride, trail was canceled because of a bear. Do we have a bear ordinance in town to keep them away from those things?
They can't read.
Thanks, have a nice night.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Erwin Miller, Five Knob Hill Drive. He said that it was canceled because of a bear, but the other gentleman said it was making accusatory claims against the council because of it. I wonder if you can clarify that, was it the council because of a bear or because of the accusatory claims from the person before?
These are public comments about our resolution about hiring an assistant city administrator. So I, I would ask that people who do comment, stick to commenting on the resolution. We have a public comment section that we can talk about the budget and people's views around budget, et cetera. I get it, this is related, but let's focus on our resolutions and such like that. We can, we'll address the bear issue later time, okay? But there was a bear, just so you know, there was a bear. And out of a preponderance of caution, I think Madam American spoke to this, they decided to cancel it at the time, why take the risk? And thankfully, it was rescheduled and I understand it went off really well.
It was. Can I speak to the bear just for a second?
Yes, you can.
I don't have very many speaking parts here, so, the bear did not know what time the haunted hike started. The bear showed up about 10 to 6 and the haunted hike started at 6. And by the time I was aware of the bear, and our PD was aware of bear, there were people on site. And indeed, between, it was about 20 minutes, I think, from the moment someone identified that there was a bear to the moment that the area was clear and everyone was safe. So I'll speak to that. So I'll speak to that.
Thank you very much.
Council President, can I just bring us back to the?
Well, yeah, I haven't closed public comments yet.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So other public comments? All right, hearing none. Let's move on to council comments on this declared vacancy.
Just want to, just be clear with the community, we are, we are declaring a vacancy for a position that had a person in it. This is not an additional new position that we're creating tonight.
Exactly.
Just, just so everybody's aware. And I'll leave it there for now.
Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capitol Projects and Community Services, number six.
Thank you, Council President. ID 11562. As, as discussed in closed session, this resolution is declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, a Division of Public Works Recreation Parks and Shade Tree Unit for a foreman. I would like to move this resolution.
Second, comments from the public. Comments from council?
Is this for someone who left?
Yes. My understanding, this is someone who's retired.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Put in his years. Any other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to Community Programs and Parking Services. Councilman Smallwood, number one, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11564, to declare a vacancy in Parking Services Agency Full Time Parking Clerk. This is to fill a position.
What I found.
Oh, sorry. What did you find? Sorry. This is to replace a, an employee who was promoted within and this is her replacement for that position. Do you mind if I just bundle these two together?
Please.
Okay. ID number 11563 is to declare a vacancy for Parking Services Part Time Parking Enforcement Officer. Again, this is a open position for an employee who is promoted within. This employee went from a parking enforcement officer to inside the office itself and so now we are just simply replacing those two employees.
Thank you.
And I move to pass this resolution.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown?
So moved.
Can we pull anything out?
What's that?
I just wanted to mention something about two of them. Can I pull them out or do we just vote on them?
You can comment, you just need a motion and a second and then you can comment.
Yeah, so we, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so please, if you'd like to comment.
Sorry, I always forget how that works.
Oh, first, let me, any comments from the public on our consent agenda?
There's a couple that I don't want to go by tonight and Kevin, you can probably talk about this a little bit. I think the grant for, to Bristol Myers Squibb, applying for that grant is really exciting. We've developed a good relationship, we've been, the mayor's been meeting with Bristol Myers Squibb and hopefully there's some remaining money left for 2024, so hopefully we get this grant money. So Kevin, thank you for, for doing that. The second one I want to mention is we are having a Veterans Day ceremony this year. Rosie, I'm not sure if we've ever had one before, but we're going to do our best to make it up as we go and we're trying to plan for that now, but we're looking forward to having, I think, our first Veterans Day, correct me if I'm wrong. And then I was really excited to see the motor vehicle event. I don't exactly know what it is, but it sounds like it's going to be a really good thing for our residents, so I don't know if anybody here knows more about it, but.
Unless the chief wants to explain, I can, about the DMV?
Yeah.
So the DMV, I'm sorry, go ahead, Council.
Please, Councilman Boyer.
Yeah, sure. Just in case we went over it, I had it written down, so. All right.
Rosie might be able to cover for you.
All right, so the motor vehicle event, so this is to grant permission to establish conditions for the Summit City Police Department to host the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission right here at City Hall. This will, you know, help with different DMV checks, registrations, licenses. I think also the new licenses, right Chief? This is the, I forget the name of the.
Real ID.
Yes, the real IDs. And I think this is going to be a, a good thing, especially for people who can't get to Springfield. I know Springfield doesn't do all of the motor vehicle, different tasks, right? And Newark's pretty far, I know some people that are at Plainfield, so I think this is a, a good event.
Any other comments on the consent agenda? Yes, please, Madam Mayor.
Do you know, and if you don't, can we find out, will they accept old license plates when they come here? Chief, do you know that? Sorry.
I happen to have some. Totally self-serving.
I'm not 100% sure about the license plate. We'll post what you have to do, because like if you, if you're doing like a real ID, you have to go online first and fill out some paperwork before you, you bring it to the site. But it's a mobile DMV unit and it's going to allow, you know, residents to, ability to like renew licenses, registrations, things that they normally would do at, at the DMV. I would, before I came to take care of a business, I would check the site to make sure that they could do whatever they plan on doing at the mobile site.
And there's a restriction on the amount of money, right, that you can, I thought I read somewhere that there's a limit on how much cash that they will accept or?
That, again, I would refer you to the, to this, for that. But I think the plates, that's an easy fix, I'm sure they'll take them. If not, we'll find someone to take it for you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments?
Yeah, just one more thing along that line. When you go, you will not get the permanent real ID physically there, you'll get a temporary and you'll get it mailed to you within two weeks.
Great. Sounds like a good grant.
Council President?
Yes.
So just to speak to the, the grant that Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hamlet had mentioned, is a $40,000 grant that actually she brought to our attention at the Department of Community Programs. It's a $40,000 grant from Bristol, Bristol Myers Squibb through their Health Equity Grant Program with, and what we're planning on doing is, hopefully we'll get this money and we'll install new park amenities such as permanent cornhole, athletic stations, and game tables at city, at the city's various parks. It will increase the usability of our parks for residents of all ages and to continue and to encourage healthy choices for all of our residents. Our hope is that we'll be able to hold special outdoor events and have for different populations and ages of all, all of our residents. So thank you for bringing that to our attention and thank you for David and Mark for putting, so quickly putting into the, that, putting together that, that grant.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. All right, that is it for our business, our city professionals, if you'd like to say a Vita Zane?
Yes.
Good night. And at this stage, we're going to open up our meeting to public comments. So if anyone from the public would like to comment, now's your opportunity for stuff that was not on the agenda.
Good evening, council. My name's John Kilby, 19 Oxbow Lane for some 47 years, involved with the Shade Tree Committee for well over a decade. At your 8th of October council meeting, Foster Osborne chose to take public his comments about myself and the activity of the Summit Shade Tree Committee, which cannot be left on the record without rebuttal. As Walter Cronkite used to say, here is the rest of the story. On the 14th of May, I was copied by the city of his email in which he described how he stopped a tree removal in progress that did not have a permit. On the 16th of May, I emailed him thanking him on behalf of the city for being proactive in this matter. I also asked if he would like to attend our next Shade Tree Meeting to describe the incident so that other members of the committee could understand what happened in the city. He asked, could he have a policeman who was involved? I indicated I thought this was not necessary. The next Shade Tree Meeting was on the 6th of June. Our usual format is to go through a stat list of some 21 activities and then an open floor for attendees to bring what they wish to the floor, a tight schedule. Mr. Osborne attended with a lawyer and told his story. However, when he started to complain as to not being able to bring a police officer, I interjected and to keep the schedule focused. Some three days later, I received an email from Mr. Osborne who wrote that he was writing from his bed at 4:10 a.m., wide awake, seething at the injustice I had done him at the meeting. He then stated, Mr. Linson, our arborist, is compromised by his friendship with tree contractors and the totally ineffectiveness of the tree ordinance. I replied that the attendance of the police officer was irrelevant and as a volunteer, I realize I cannot please everyone. He responded with a story, per verbatim, "The English are a nation of backstabbers," and a similar remark about the Australians. Perhaps he was confused as my heritage and wanted to cover all bases. I replied, my initial response to you was measured acting as the Chair of the Shade Tree Committee, even though your insinuations were totally out of line. However, the latest email directed at me personally with a stupid anecdote as such, I should tell you what I think. This is the last email I will open, direct any further emails to relevant City Hall people." He later emailed to his new neighbor and copied the city with various accusations of me. Now to his specific comments to council. Tree ordinance, the committee did a lot of work into the new ordinance and this will provide solutions for our arborist to perform his job better than in the past with the registered tree companies. That I am unqualified, I've been a rutgers master gardener for some 17 years and with the guidance of John Linson, our arborist, a past president of New Jersey Shade Tree Federation, I am learning month by month. As to my being rude, I would only characterize this with an old Yorkshire phrase of "the kettle is calling the pot." Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comments?
Could we close the door? There's just some outside noise coming in.
Good evening, Mayor Fagan, Council President, Members of Common Council, Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue. Just a question, is the GEA program that was presented earlier by Lisa Hibbs of Commercial Utility Consultants, Inc., was that in the council packet or if not, will it be on the city website?
Thank you. We're going to post it to the website for all to see. Other comments from the public? All right, seeing no other comments, we're going to, oh, got one more.
Erwin Miller, 5 Knob Hill Drive, just want to share my gratitude for Mike. I think you've been, I've been watched virtually, unfortunately I can't come to all the meetings, but it seems like you've been incredible for this town. You know, Lisa was amazing, this town, council's been amazing. I think you're able to bring this town together and case in point, I'll leave my comments at that. So thank you for what you're doing for this town and I hope that regardless of where we go in a couple of weeks, that you can keep holding it all together for us. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Good evening, everybody. Mark Gunderson, 5 Brook Court. I wanted to just flag a couple of things that I hope are useful for council. As, as some may know, I've been talking with many residents over the last few months in Summit and multiple neighbors have mentioned a handful of specific pedestrian safety and road issues that seem to me to be addressable and straightforward. I wanted to put these on council's list just for further investigation or follow-up. First, real quick, is the intersection of Druid Hills and Mountain, right at the bottom of Druid Hill, which I think could really use an illuminated sign. Number of students cross, you know, en route to the middle school there, especially now with daylight savings, it's getting darker earlier and diminished daylight. Several residents on Druid Hill flagged that and raised that with me and I was very pleased recently, I think in the last week or two, that there's a flashing beacon now at Colton, Ashland. And I think that the Druid Hill-Mountain Ave intersection would benefit from, you know, the same lighting. Another really, just briefly, is the intersection of High Street and Springfield Avenue. I live just two blocks from there. The intersection is quite difficult for cars coming off of High Street, especially turning left, also for pedestrians crossing that street. There are three Summit High School students that live on that immediate block and cross there to get to school and there's no crosswalk currently, so I think it would at least be worth looking into. And then finally, just another frequently raised, the road, road issue is the poor condition. I have some photos of the, the bridge, the county bridge on Pine Grove that is between Prospect and Springfield. I know it's a county bridge, but my understanding is that there's already some work planned for that. But just generally speaking, I think an update for the community would certainly be helpful there and I just wanted to flag those and thanks for looking into them further. Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. As long as we're bringing up some safety issues, Morris Avenue and, well done by Marco Polos. Morris Avenue and I'm drawing a blank for the name of that street right now.
Aubrey?
Aubrey, thank you. You think I should know that, I live in the neighborhood. But when you're trying to pull out of Aubrey on to Morris Avenue to make a left or make a right, because of the new parking spots that are in front of the restaurant there, when people park really close to the curb, it cuts down in a sight triangle for traffic. So if we could get that on the list of things to look at and also due to the curve in the road around Marco Polos, you're so busy trying to figure out which car's coming first that if there was a car parked in front of that Italian restaurant, not Marco Polos, the other one, you could have a problem there. And I know we installed the lights for, for the pedestrians across the street, but it still is a hazardous area. And we need to change the sign in front of the other Italian restaurant, because it says no stopping, no standing, yet we have parking spots there. So either, either it's a parking spot that's enforced or it's no stopping, no standing, it can't be both. So if we could put that on the list, that would be fantastic.
La Focaccia?
Yeah.
You got to give them a plug.
Well, La Focaccia.
You're welcome.
So, and I knew the name, I just didn't know what to say. Okay? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, we'll close that part of our meeting, wrap it up with comments from council. Who would like to take us out?
I have one.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
I have a couple, I guess Chief Zagorski, I'm sure you're, with those comments about safety, there's a, there's a road that we turned one way, which is right outside of school, Summit School of Dance, and people have been asking me why we ever turned that one way and I think they, they're saying that, I don't know if we can put a better sign there or what the reason is, but I think, I think we're also fixing that light by Summit School of Dance, so I'll get an update on when, when that is fixed. But that whole area, I think, Jamel, is an area where if we can just put that in your committee to sort of mentally, okay. But the one way is the one I have a question about.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot that goes into making a street one way.
Yeah, I know, I know. But it was a long time ago and people were asking me the history of it, I just don't, I don't know, so if anybody knows the answer.
But the light is in, that's in motion and I think the other concern, well.
Yeah, that's all, that was just quick. And then my last thing, I see some members of the Salt Brook in the audience and I just want to say we did have our meeting, our second meeting in person with DEP near the Salt Brook, which I think was very, very beneficial. We had the DEP engineer and the DEP environmentalist, so the mayor and Councilman Boyer were out there, I think, was that anybody else there? But I think it was a very good takeaway, so right now what we're doing is we're sending all of our information to the DEP and I'm not sure, Mr. Tucci, if you have anything else to say about it, but I felt really good about the meeting and I'm hopeful that we can potentially help these residents.
I'm following up with discussions with DEP myself, talking in more technical terms than your meeting.
Yeah, thank you. That, that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
Sure, I'll.
Yeah. Councilman Boyer, please.
So I want to take a moment to acknowledge the multiple different calls and emails and concerns that I, that I've gotten about e-bikes and electric bikes and, and speeding in the community in general. I think as a safety council, as mayor, and even Councilman Palowski, we have heard your complaints. We, we get it and we understand. I live on Morris Avenue, it is. I live on Morris Avenue, it is, it can be like a raceway sometimes. I mean, I live it just like you do, but I want residents to think about this. We are asking our police officers to walk the beat in town. We're asking our police officers to patrol, to stop burglaries and car thefts, and patrol and stop speeding, quality of life issues. In 2024, the demand on our police department is vast. They do a lot of things, some things that you may not even, even know of. I mean, they are utilized daily, and I think when it comes to budget time, I mean, compared to Millburn, we are still, you know, short officers to really do what we need to get done. Obviously, they can't be in all places at the same time, but imagine a city where we're saying, hey, enforce, you know, kids and people who ride on e-bikes, go after the criminals who are stealing cars and burglaries, and then, you know, look into quality of life issues. And then also, we want you to do speeding. You know, the residents really have to take a hard look at our infrastructure, right? And, and our police department, and our current numbers, because that's, that's a high demand, and I get it. All of those are areas where, where I'd like to see more enforcement. And I think we have a current strategy that, that if implemented, would be good. So, we'll wait until the budget time, and, you know, we'll see what the residents have to say. But, you know, I'm always pushing for additional officers so that we can really, really enforce these issues. The next thing I have is, I made this speech last year, Halloween, streetlights. Mr. Tucci, if we could, look at the streetlights, one place in particular, I've been there, I did a, I finally did a C-click Fix, and I've been monitoring it on Dennis Place. So, there's a streetlight on Dennis Place that's been out, it's a little cul-de-sac, there are a ton of kids there, and if we could really get the streetlights replaced before Halloween, I made the call, you know, a couple weeks ago, but I don't, I don't know if we can get there, but, streetlights are important. If we talk about pedestrian safety and children being hit, well, one of those things is streetlights. They need to be able to see. The other thing is, Delia stole my thunder here about working with the DEP, I was very impressed with the Department of Environmental Protection. That team, they were great. They provided, their expertise was, was amazing, and they don't like to give up any space, though. You can't move a flower. But it was good, they met with us, they came, they met with us, they got down in the mud and dirt, and they looked at it, and, yeah, I mean, it is a pressing, Adriana, I see there, it is a pressing issue. I mean, I think every time I see the back of your house, it just looks like more and more land is, is missing, like I'm in California or something. And the last thing that I have, veteran, I got a call from a veteran, and he said, you know, hometown heroes, right? Could we, could we keep them up until Veterans Day? I know, and I, I think the reason why we take the flags down is because of the weather, right? We don't want them to get destroyed and everything, right? But it seems to me like the weather stays nice until maybe Veterans Day? So, maybe an option is to just keep them up until Veterans Day, I don't know, but I guess that's something that we can, we can discuss further. The last thing is, I'm having a meeting with the Park Line Steering Committee, so I'm excited about that, to get that going. I'm glad that I was able to get, with the help of our council president and mayor, I was glad to get it, get all, I don't know, eight, ten of us on a team or Zoom call tomorrow, so hopefully we can push this along and get the residents' concerns addressed and finally move forward on the park line. So that's it, thank you.
Council President, just one question, Councilman Boyer?
Yes, please.
Could you just give me the number of that call? I'll see what I can do about that streetlight right away.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Miniger?
I'm going to, I don't mean to pile on to safety and street requests, but these are two that were from a little bit ago, so I'm just going to check in on...
No, please, man.
Yeah, Henry Street, there was a request for traffic calming measure, study there, if that's at all possible. And then...
What's the cross, what's the cross street? I'm sorry.
Henry, Henry Glen Side, entire length between Glen Side and Ashwood. And then, the other one is Clark Street and Huntley Road.
We have, yeah, we have that one.
Cool, okay.
And Henry, I believe, too. I'll send you an email, Andy.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Other council comments?
Council President, I just have an update on the Halloween parade. We are having our annual Halloween parade Saturday, October 28th. It's the, it's the Halloween parade sponsored by the Summit PAL. The lineup for the parade will begin behind Twenty-Four, Twenty-five to Forest Avenue at two forty-five.
It's the twenty-sixth, sorry. It's Saturday's the twenty-sixth.
I was going to say...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ten twenty-five?
It was a typo, sorry. I don't need to restart. Saturday, October 26th.
Right.
Summit PAL Halloween Parade. The, the lineup will begin behind the Twenty-five to Forest Avenue at two forty-five. The parade will depart for the Village Green at 3:00 p.m. Once at the Village Green, there will be music, treats, and candy for all to enjoy. Judging will be completed by four fifteen, and awards will be given for the following categories. Most 2024 relevant, I guess if you were, I would encourage you to have some sort of 2024 on you, to be relevant. Scariest, cutest, best group, most original, Mayor Fagan's choice, and best overall. So, encourage you to join this great parade, is something that we all participated in last year, I think, I don't think we've decided on a, oh, we haven't decided on our costumes yet, but we'll, we'll figure that out.
That's a lot of pressure.
I know, so, look forward to seeing you on October, Saturday, October 26th, at two forty-five.
That's a tough job to have to judge the cutest costume. I think I did that one year, it's hard.
I'm not reading completely, looking forward to that.
Council President, I'm so sorry, I forgot one thing.
Oh, please.
This, this, this Friday, we will be doing a soft ribbon cutting opening for the firehouse for city and elected officials. So I am extremely happy about that. The official for the town, I'm hearing, will be at the end of November. I'm going to say that because I'm, I'm going to hold the chief to that, so, the end of November. We got to move couches and stuff, and we'll move some couches, so. But yes, but I'm happy that we will be cutting the ribbon on Friday, so.
Thank you for that, that was a good reminder. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski?
Thank you. Yeah, so some of this has been touched on already, but we did put in two new blinking lights last week, one's at Ashland and Colt Road, the other one is at Morris Ave and St. Teresa's. We also have one coming soon at Magic Fountain. The blinking light at the Summit School of Dance is not working, we are aware of this. Apparently, I learned that it takes time to get parts, and so I've asked, as we, as we continue to increase the use of blinking lights in town, I've asked that we take stock of what the most common problems are, how to fix them, and purchase stock of replacement parts, so that we don't have to order them every time. Councilman Boyer mentioned additional police officers, I'd like to get a couple more myself. I think it's interesting, everybody always compares us to Millburn, they currently have eight more police officers than us, so hopefully we'll catch up with them someday. We have discussed in the past taking a streetlight inventory, and I believe that our engineering department has started that, but we will follow up. There are many lights in town that are, I haven't seen many that are out, but there are many that are looking pretty low, and I don't know if that's by design, or if it's by, just because they need to be, be changed, but I think, isn't that JCPN-L that has to do that? Does GEA do that, Kevin?
They do not.
Then, as to the fieldhouse, so, going into this year, before we had the budget, there was a plan in place that the Board of Ed was going to re, what's the word I'm looking for?
Rebuild.
Renovate, renovate, the fieldhouse. And they were supposed to go out to bid, I think, in July. The plan was never, it was always to try to get through this season before they had to work on it, and it just didn't make it, so, the funds that were spent were, were done because we had an emergency, and I think insurance covered, what's that?
I thought two payments of seventy-eight thousand were covered by JF, was it one payment? I just don't have the numbers on them. I can't remember.
Yeah, I...
There was one payment for...
Was it one payment? I think it was on the last bill list.
Yeah, so I, I think a lot of, or all of that seventy-eight thousand that was mentioned was covered by our insurance, and that's it.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Boyer, you got another?
Well, I'm sorry, Council President, but I believe either Councilman Palowski or the mayor promised me to do a PS, that they would do a PSA on speeding, I don't know. I don't want to get in trouble with the mayor.
Please stop speeding, everybody. No, but seriously, it's funny, because we all go about our daily business, and sometimes you just don't realize how fast you're going, different cars seem to want to go faster than others, and I'll be honest, you know, it was when I ran for council that I thought to myself, geez, I better not get pulled over here, and I, and I realized that I was a part of the problem, and so, I have, since then, and I continue to take care, to, to look at my speedometer and to try to do the speed limit. Leave early, you know, if you're, if you don't want to be late, be early. And tell your kids that, too, because a lot of, a lot of the speeding in town is, is from our, our younger drivers. Is that good?
I think younger drivers have been, you know, be late, be early.
Right. All right, thanks for the plug, and wise words, we should all follow them. Other comments? All right, I'm just going to wrap it up. I just want to thank the public, the last couple of meetings, you guys have had good comments, probing questions, make us think, and they've been delivered very civilly, and I'm very happy that you're here, and I'm happy that you're engaged, and keep it up. But I just, I do want to, you know, we, a couple of meetings earlier in the year were a little messy, and, and we want to encourage people to come and say what they want to say, and I think you guys are a great example on how to do that, and really great commentary, good questions, but in the right way, so, that's all I have to say.
Council President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.